Man, I have six thirty, so I'll give another minute then I'll call the meeting to order.
Sounds good.
Okay.
That's fine.
I want to make sure Fran's ready because she takes those notes.
Yeah, I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay. Give it one minute and then I'll call it in. Good evening, everybody, and I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board meeting for Thursday, January twenty first, twenty twenty one. The first matter on the agenda is the minutes for approval of the January fourth, twenty twenty one meeting. Any board members have any corrections, comments?
None.
They have none as well?
None.
None? Anybody that can make a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion is made by Caleb, I think, and seconded by Bob, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the minutes have been approved, thank you. So we're moving on to a site plan review and a special permit, and this matter has been continued in the past. So this is seven twenty four Chelmsford Street and eighteen Wellman Street. Eva Development LLC and Crete Development LLC have applied to the planning board for site plan review and special permit approval to construct the drive-through ATM building at the subject property. The property is in the high-rise commercial zoning district and requires site plan review and special permit approval under section twelve point four point G one of the Lowell Ordinance. This matter was before us in the past, and we didn't have any architectural designs of what the drive-through would look like. After discussion with the board and discussion with the applicant, we continued the matter further so we could get some more information, some comments back from staff, as well as some architectural plans. And saying that, at this time, I'll turn it over if we can hear from the applicants, please.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Brian Goodrow Hancock Associates and Demetrius Mathios with Eva Development and Crete Development. So we were back before the board back in December, kind of going over the nuts both of the projects. And since that time, we received a handful of comments, and comments were made during that hearing. And what we've done is we've revised the plan, responded to the comments, and issued a visual exhibit of what we're anticipating the drive-through to look like. So just quickly run through kind of the changes in the comments that we've made today. There was a question about the sidewalk that was running down Wellman Ave from the driveway to the project exit. And it was expressed that it was desirable to have that sidewalk extended to the greatest extent practicable in front of the existing, what is the residential home right now, it's the driveway, to shorten the sidewalk that's crossing the exit behind the existing plaza where the drive-through is going to be. That has been added to the plans that you can see. There was a question about a zoning breakdown of parking demand. And what we've done is Demetrius provided a tenant list, we went by square footage, and existing tenants to break down uses, proposed uses, which remain what they are today, and have shown on sheet three that breakdown, basically, there's a hundred and fifty, or excuse me, there's fifty-one spaces that are required and fifty-three spaces that are provided onsite. So we provide, we're providing adequate parking. There's a note regarding unstriped spaces at the rear of the building that was supposed to be designated for employee parking. Those are now striped spaces, and that note has been removed from the plan. It was asked for a landscape plan. So what we've done is we've had our registered landscape architect, James Emanuel, develop a landscape plan to show how the green space is going to be planted once that residential building comes down and the drive-through canopy and land are constructed, should they be approved this evening. So that landscape plan is attached to the plan set. And finally, as, as Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned regarding architectural plans. Now, what we've done is we've created a visual of what we anticipate the canopy to look like to have it in harmony with the existing plaza, kind of in the same style. So while architectural elevations and renderings were specific asked for, we have a little bit of a conundrum on our part. So Bank of America is the tenant that the applicant is seeking the drive-through for. However, the bank wants the special permit to allow the drive-through to be in place prior to engaging and executing a lease agreement. So we're in a little bit of a catch-22. The bank wants the drive-through, won't sign a lease until we have permission to build the drive-through, but we can't get architectural renderings from the bank until obviously the lease is executed and it goes to construction. So what we've done is attached to the response letter to the departmental comments and then board comments from last time, we've highlighted a picture of the existing facade of the building. And what Demetrius did is he actually ran through the exercise of driving around the city of Lowell to try to find a canopy, to try to find a drive-through that would be very, very similar to what we're trying to accomplish here. Unfortunately, there's nothing quite in the same style, same architecture of the existing plaza. So we found a three-lane drive-through canopy that's at the corner of Aker and Aiken and Lakeview. I don't know what bank it used to be, it's a pawn shop now. But that was somewhat representative of the kind of flow that this plaza is going to be seeing. Where you have three drive-through lanes, there's no drive-up cellar window because the building is actually on the opposite side of where the driver's seat would be. So there'll be two ATM kiosks on what is designated as lanes two and three. So lane one is the closest building, or the closest drive-out to the building, followed by lane two in the middle and lane three towards the outside. So lane one would be designated as a bypass lane without any sort of ATM or teller or any kind of equipment there, so you could just drive through if you needed to. And lanes two and three would have the ATM kiosk. Additionally, on the visual exhibit, there is a kind of an updated ATM that B of A is putting out right now. We're able to find something very, very similar to what we think is going to go into that space. So given this, this visual, you can, you can match the fact that there's a kind of a green metal canopy going over the front of the plaza which will be mirrored on the drive-through canopy. There is a brick architectural column, a brick veneer that's going over a structural steel that's holding up that canopy, which will be the same in the back drive-through area. So if you could use a little bit of creativity, you can sort of envision what, what we're looking for. We're looking for carrying something that's out there today through this, this, this area. So what we would like to do, if the board so wishes, is if there are still concerns about final architectural plans that obviously will be developed as a part of a building permit application, should a special permit be approved, we can certainly pass those through DPD if the board wishes. We could put them back before the board for any sort of commentary. But I think the visual is somewhat clear that what we're really trying to do is a mirror of what is out there today. And with that said, Demetrius is here, and I'm happy to kind of walk through any of that if it was unclear or if there are additional comments from the board.
Okay, so before I open up to the public, does Demetrius want to speak? And then I'll turn it over to anybody who may be available from the public.
Good evening, gentlemen, and happy new year, all. I just want to reiterate what Brian have said. And also, to just tell you that we'd like to take the congestion that is right now in the plaza into the outer of the plaza by creating the drive-through. So that will improve the condition to all of the tenants and the bank, of course, and also upgrade the site. Whatever Brian said, I went along with him, we talked about it. And I'm going to assure you that anything that was going to be done there would be done properly and according to law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this point in time then, I'm going to turn the matter over to the public. I'll start off with, anybody like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor, hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, anybody have any comments or just questions at all about the project? Hearing none from the public, at this time, I'll return it back over to the board members. Any other board members have any questions or comments? If not, I just have a couple to start with. So by looking at the drive-through, is this drive-through going to be attached to the building?
All right, now, that's the way it's being envisioned, yes.
Okay, so looking at the photos you gave us, let me just go through this again. So you have one to the far left says bypass lane. So, but it has an X there, so that be, would that be similar like a window there? Or that's no, or just the other two lanes? I didn't catch it.
No, so it would be, it would be just a bypass lane, it wouldn't be a window on the building. I think the interior configuration of the B of A is not really going to allow for that. They'd have to go through significant construction to make that happen, let alone the fact it's really, it's more of just a window because it's on the opposite side.
Because some of these that I know of, when you go up, some of those basically just a drive-through window. And then a lot of them are sort of like a kiosk where you can do all sorts of bank transactions, not just deposit check, cash check, but you can do all sorts of ones. So would that be something that would be done by one of these, or just basically the drive-through cash check ATM thing? And/or are they accessible by pedestrians?
So we're not envisioning them to be accessible by pedestrians because obviously it's a drive-through. If they wanted to use an ATM, a kiosk, it's interior of the building, there's a lobby, you wipe your ATM card, you go inside and do it. So that's already an amenity for the bank, and it will continue to be one, this will be vehicular only. In terms of multiple transactions and different types of transactions, really going to be up to Bank of America because how much they want to invest in the infrastructure. There are those kiosks that you talk about, their coin, ITM, their internet teller machines where you basically talk to a visual teller agent, and they can walk you through all the steps to do that. It's certainly an option, I don't think Demetrius is visioning that, it's more of an ATM. You just get, you, you make your transactions that are traditionally available and you go. But certainly, if, if the bank wanted to have that enhanced service level, we would like to be able to offer that to them.
So basically, where the, where these ATM machines are going to be is located on Wellman Street, correct? Where that home is there that's going to come down? Okay, so when that home comes down, is there going to be landscaping to the right on the ATMs? I'm not sure how it was by looking at it.
Yep, so if you're looking at the ATM, or the, the drive-through from Wellman into the exit where the house is now, yes, there's going to be landscaping.
There's like a lawn to the right of it.
Yep, there's a lawn to the right of it.
There's a side street that goes down. Yeah, that goes over to the side street down, right. So then there'll be landscape on that right side as well?
Correct, yep, and that's reflected on the updated landscape plan.
Yeah, so what would that be, this green areas with shrubs or?
It's going to be a combination of low-line shrubs and significant grass area. So if you look at sheet L one, which is attached to the back of the plan set after sheet five. Yeah, sheet L one, that is our landscape plan that James Emanuel, our registered landscape architect, came up with. So there's going to be shrubs and plantings behind the newly constructed sidewalk along Wellman. And then there's also going to be some kind of, towards the back as the drive-through bend to screen the industrial building that's currently behind the residential building.
Because there's, because there's a slope in the back there, correct?
There is.
And a retaining wall where it goes back to the other building?
Yep, so the top of the retaining wall will be landscape.
Yeah, I think, I believe at the last meeting you said that retaining wall is going to stay in place, is that correct, Brian?
It's going to be relocated, but there will be a wall.
Okay, all right, so that's the only questions I have about that kiosk. I know in the comments back that we had back in December before that meeting, there was, I know one of the questions was that you're working with stormwater and you have to obtain a stormwater permit. Is that something that you are on board with? It did say that you've already been working with the stormwater department.
Exactly, yep, so we met with my store, met with the stormwater team, they're fully on board with our design. Now, it's just a matter of having that permit executed, which I think would follow any approvals given.
Okay, so you have no problem with a conditional approval if need be for a storm, to obtain a stormwater permit as well?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have at this time, so if any other board members would like to?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Fischett, please.
Brian, if we could stay on that plan L one, because I think that illustrates one of the questions I have. And it's one of the, I find a little difficult without having a traffic engineer on, on projects that are being presented. But if you look at that, that plan, and first of all, can I say I really appreciate the extra parking that's being added to this plaza? Because this plaza is a good example of how some of these plazas that over the years, they almost, it's by their very design, limit the success of some of the businesses that are, that are in the plaza because they just cannot handle the hassle. They've become a real challenge. And this site is certainly, you know, to the credit of the businesses that are in there, you can go buy that at any given time, and it is really tight. So do appreciate the extra added parking. However, if we look behind the building with the changed configuration, and so you're looking at all that angled parking, so if you were to exit, you would back out of those spots and you would go through what is considered the bypass lane between the, the building and what is going to be the kiosk. If you look at those, that last parking spot, where you try to get around the building, where you're going to turn heading towards the, the overhead for the kiosk, and if there's a backup, and Brian, one of the things you didn't show us is any kind of queuing for the ATM and what that would look like. And the reason I wanted to see that too is that if you put an automobile right there, there is no way, if there's a car park actually in either one of those last two spots, that a vehicle is going to be able to get through there and go through the bypass. So I think there's a, there's a problem with the flow getting around that building right now, the way this is presented.
So if you look on sheet three, sheet three actually has a queuing diagram on it to the right of the main. And it actually has a breakdown of the zoning required.
Oh, here it is, okay, off to the side over. We're, we're dealing with not full-size plans, so not the easiest thing to say.
Understood, and we can put up a thing of the DPD. But if you look at the, the queuing diagram and the breakdown of the required queuing per city zoning, there's five queuing spaces per ATM, per kiosk, per drive-up window. So what we've shown is we've shown those required five queuing spaces in both lane number two and lane number three. And with those having full queues per zoning, you can still get down that bypass lane. Now, something that Demetrius has spoken to at the last hearing was that the parking behind the building is intended for employees only. So this is not the general public that has to park behind the building to walk all the, all the way around and attend or to, to visit one of these businesses. These are employees with set hours and set times. So this is going to be a situation where if they run into that issue, they're one, not going to be accustomed to, and two, it's not going to be the conflict that, that you think it is. So what, what we've represented here is the fact that we've, we've, we've provided the spaces that are required to us. There obviously is additional queuing that's allowed in the area that could accommodate it. But given the nature of the essentially assigned parking spaces, we don't really feel it'd be as big of a conflict as if the general public was going to be utilizing those spaces.
Right, well, I mean, this is good, I honestly didn't see this, this sheet in the, in the, I didn't pick that up in the plan, Brian, so that's good. Now, the only thing I would, I would tell you is, and I know that meets the zoning, but, and I know what you're looking for. I would have a concern about approving anything that's beyond an ATM and an interactive kiosk. I don't even have information on the type of queuing that may take place on something like that. That's, that's, that's relatively new in the business. And so I really don't know, I think at that point, if that's what the bank wanted to, I think they would have to provide some information on that and probably have to come back to the board. From my perspective, I don't know what the other board members feel, right? I do have some concern with the, with the interactive kiosk. I would also tell you in the day of COVID here, in the age of COVID, if lobbies are closed and you're relying on the ATMs, then the queuing is a lot longer in the ATMs, the ATM lines than what normally you would see. And that's, I understand the zoning, but I also understand as a reality we have to deal with. Again, I don't know the timeline we're talking about as far as when, you know, construction events are online. But I think that would be, that would be something that, because quite frankly, Brian, I think we would agree if it queued beyond the five cars, that, that would be potentially an issue, the spot that I'm concerned about. And then I think the design, unfortunately, it's still, it's still loose. I guess I, I'm okay with sending it to DPD for final review to come back before the planning board if there was an issue. But you really haven't provided us with how it really is going to look, it's kind of how you think it's going to look. And it sounds like the bank is still going to want a certain, a certain look, so. Because I honestly didn't know it was going to be attached to the building. I thought it was a standalone kiosk that people were going to drive up to. So I didn't realize we were going to have an overhang attached to the building. So I'm assuming, is that, is that something that is, is, at least that concept of it, is that what you're presenting? Is that, do you know that at least is going to be how it's going to be constructed?
Right, so that, that piece of it is something that we wouldn't anticipate B of A having any real input on. We want a canopy there, it's going to be stylistically, architecturally like the existing plaza. What B of A is really going to drive down, drill down on is what the kiosk is, any specific parameters regarding, you know, curving, length of, of curb outs, crash protection, width, things, things of that nature.
Those, so again, I, I'm glad I missed that in the sheets, Brian, so that's good that you had this queuing in here. I do have beyond the zoning, I have a little bit of a concern as to what the potential is. And that's all I have, yeah, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Fischett, any other board members?
Yeah, I have, I also had that concern about the queuing of the cars beyond ten cars in that last space near the building about traffic flow. But I also, did I hear say there's a bank in the building in the plaza?
Yeah, it's in the, it's the far right of the plaza, yep.
Yep, so it's affiliated with the bank in the plaza.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, there is a bank.
Yeah, that's the, that's the same bank, Bank of America.
They would get it in the bag.
Correct.
So it sounds like it's just kiosk for getting ATM and depositing or what, you know, the money stuff that people do outside bank to get it going without having to park and go in the bank.
Yes.
If that's the case, I'm fine with the, the proposal as shown. I know the architecturals aren't final, but if, if the bank is going to make, want to have their corporate design on the, the overhead, I think that's something I would defer to the DPD to review and see if it is appropriate for that site. And if they have a problem with it, it will come back to us. Otherwise, I don't see any other real issues. I love the landscaping on that side, it's kind of a green space that people can just relax, they have lunch there or whatever, it's not going to be fenced off, right? The green space?
It will not be.
Okay. Then that's all the concerns I have.
Thank you, Brian, anybody else?
Just have a, as others, a question and a concern about the queuing and the capacity to you know, accommodate traffic. I mean, you've got a very busy street there, and the impact that the traffic could have on that is important. I'd like to get some more information on that. That's all, really, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart.
Generally would work.
Anybody else like to speak on the board, any questions?
Chairman, I just have one question.
Sure, can I go right ahead?
I did just want to say that I do think it's an improvement to the site. I'm pretty familiar with the site, and I think the added parking will be a big, will be a big improvement to the parking situation there. But my one question is, I believe that there's a fire hydrant, basically where I think one of the new lanes is coming through. So I just wanted to ask if there was any plans and discussion with the fire department about relocating that hydrant?
No, we haven't had that discussion yet, but obviously it's going to be something that's going to be vetted before it's constructed as a part of that building permit process. We're either going to be relocating the hydrant towards the green space or eliminating it depending on the fire department's needs, but it's certainly their discretion on that.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, Brian, that's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
I just have one question about, I had a question about the queuing too. I just wanted to double-check and make sure I was understanding it correctly. I just wanted to double check and make sure I was understanding it correctly. So for the ATM itself, um cars would be coming in from Chelmsford Street, going through the back of the shopping center and then coming out on Wellman Street?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's an exit only on Wellman.
Excellent.
All right. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Caleb, I guess you have next. Anything else? Anything to add?
Um, I, well, thank you for uh revised plan. I, I certainly think that the extended sidewalk will be an improvement uh to, to the, to the uh pedestrian um going about and also to the residential neighbors uh down the street, especially with the multifamily home uh building um at, at the end of the uh Wellman Street. Um, I have a question about uh lighting. I understand that um there's no definite design for the canopy, so um.
Uh, that's a good question.
Uh, I suppose like you showed an image, so um I wanted to just verify if, are you, would you, would you imagine it will be similar type of lighting um as the picture?
What, what I would envision is probably wall packs um on either side to kind of illuminate the drive out and obviously under canopy lighting. And that's really going to be dictated by B of A's security protocols um depending on their, their uh systems and, and things like that. So there will definitely be lighting, but it will be focused on the canopy itself and for um the user.
Thank you. And uh I, I, I would certainly defer that to DPD as well. And also there, I would suppose there will be security cameras uh uh planted.
Without saying.
Yes. So um just.
Definitely. I, I can give that answer. I bet it will be camera, as it is already there. You got cameras and it will be more cameras going on and lighting, as you said.
Lighting, yes.
I think as long as uh, as so, as long as the lighting is designed with guidelines uh permitted to the ordinance uh that, that will be, that will be fine with me.
It's required by the bank, certain lighting there. As a matter, two years ago, the bank came on and changed the lighting on the plaza, so we have plenty of light.
Great. Uh, I, I, I would think that the uh, in terms of the board, we would just be concerned about like light that is, that might be uh bleeding into the, to the surrounding neighborhood. So, so um I think there is a guideline ordinance, um so I'll just stick to that. Uh, I'm sure DPD can guide you on that one. So thank you. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Caleb.
Mr. Chairman, can I just get a clarification?
Sure.
Real quick from Brian.
Sure.
Brian, if I, if I took my notes correctly on, on the, so on the memo that we received from you dated January nineteenth, you indicated there were fifty parking spaces with fifty-one spaces proposed. This evening you said there were fifty-one spaces with fifty-three.
Fifty-one.
So I, yes, yes, sir. On sheet three, again, I referenced that parking breakdown. I misspoke. I, I apologize. It, it is fifty, fifty-one spaces proposed, fifty uh and space on tenant.
Okay. No, I just, I just wanted to clarify that. Just wondering if we had a couple that we could chop off, or at least one we could chop off, but uh. I, I'm not really liking that one on the corner, Brian.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why it's not like, you don't put it like uh in an angle? Well, I, I guess it will go out to the traffic even further. Uh, I just think that might tuck in with the triangle there.
Parking is needed on the site, but boy, I, I really just don't, I, I mean, a- again, what you're adding is, is, is uh I think an improvement, but I, I really, I, I, I do have an issue with that, with that part right on the corner.
But they only require fifty, right?
Yes. Uh, Demetrius, would, would you have an issue uh kind of losing one space and going down to the zoning required of fifty? We would take out and probably just stripe that space on the end and then see for uh Caleb's kind of comment if we could potentially turn the other spaces directly adjacent to it, even if it's not at that sixty degree angle, if it's something somewhat similar um to kind of just pull it and tuck it in closer. Would you have an issue with losing one of those?
If the board feels much more comfortable with it, we can go on with.
Yeah, we should.
I think that would be an improvement, yeah.
We can stripe, we can stripe that space.
Yeah, if I may, the idea of eliminating the congestion right now that we have inside the plaza alone is worth doing what we're doing now. When I built up the plaza, I did not have the space in the back. Otherwise it wouldn't be in this predicament right now.
Right.
However, now we can at least correct something that was done. And it's going to be better for everybody.
No, I, and I would agree with those observations. It just, we just don't want to create another potential issue that doesn't exist today uh because we're going to circulate the building. And I would just, even though there are employees, uh I, I can tell you when they're getting off their shift, they just want to get out of there. And uh if they're going to back out and if, if they just can't get to that bypass lane, I, I just think that would, uh if we can, if, if, looking at the plan on the surface, I think we all came to the same conclusion that there's a potential issue there. If we could address it, I think this is the time to do it, aren't we?
And I agree with you.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
So I just have one question going back to the, I think what Jerry brought up, who the banks without more people with the COVID, I'm doing more in the line, the COVID and, and, and um the drive thru. So basically, so the drive thru, when you go around the back of the building, you'll be in a line. They'll be taking you to the, to the ATMs and the queuing, correct? Right. So if it's backed up and everything is slow, there's really no way you can get out of that line, correct? You're stuck there.
And until you round the corner, that's correct. You're going to be in the line.
Right.
This is why we left one line open.
Okay. So therefore you have that line instead of somebody doesn't want to continue to wait, instead of going through into the um drive thru, there, once you come around, you have that one line to extra pass.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And therefore, uh, Mr. Chairman, by eliminating that parking spot,
Yeah.
and i- if you are queued further in it, at least you can get around, you know, you can get around there to, to get that bike.
Yeah, because sometimes people get in that line and if they're not moving too quick, they want to get out, then you're like stuck, you know? Or, or they get emergency call for some reason.
Right.
And I know they're tough. I mean, and I know a lot of queues, once you get in, you're stuck.
But not, don't have any exit. We will have only, now we will have, at least we'll have a ninety percent chance to get through on the other.
That's what I'm thinking of, you know, at least, you know, and maybe the benefit of losing that one spot really helped tie, tie into that as Jerry was mentioning earlier. What do you think of that, Jerry? You think that's a little more feasible?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm more comfortable with that. I just, I'm very uncomfortable with.
Yeah. I mean, I can see what people, you know, trying to get out of their queue line and, you know, get them on the back, trying to get out of there. And that could cause more trouble than it's worth, right?
Yes.
To try, I mean, I'm obviously like to see more parking, but if the parking is going to be a problem, as Jerry said earlier, I think we should address it now. And if it's only one space and they still meet the zoning, um, uh, probably doable.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. And I, I know you're kind of stuck with the architectural with the bank. So um, you know, I think I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, sending it to the, to the board. I mean, um, I mean, sending it to staff, but I think um the board should at least see it one way or another.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a banker. I've been doing it for forty-one years. And I worked at Union National Bank at one time and they went to build a branchout in Groton. Groton didn't care. The planning board didn't care what the bank standard was and they, and they had to live with it.
There you go.
Well, I believe it.
Perspective, we're very cooperative here in the city of Lowell compared to some of the surrounding communities.
Yeah, I'm sure the same thing with Westwood would have been the same.
Yeah. So uh obviously I think we're comfortable with DPD, but uh if, if there's an issue, they can come back to the board, but.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm still not, you know, again, I don't give into completely. It has to be exactly the way Bank of America wants it to be. I mean, you still have the final say.
Right. And I mean, I think if it, if it went to DPD, um, I'd like to have DPD at least show it to us at a planning board meeting and to make sure that we're satisfied with it. If not, then we'll call the applicant back in.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, instead of just, because then it still leaves the board at the position where we were at the last meeting, not knowing what we've approved and what it's going to look like.
Right.
So I mean.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I want to reiterate, I would not be in favor of approving, I want to be specific in it's an ATM and not an interactive kiosk.
Right.
Bank wants an interactive kiosk, then I would suggest they have to come back before the.
And I, and I agree with.
Different animal.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, go ahead, Demetrius. Sorry.
I, I would like to see ATM only. However, the bank wants to make sure that before they spending any effort and money, they want to make sure that this can be done. And that is why I'm in this predicament now. I'm going through all of this. So to make sure we don't chase them away, let's put it that way, by putting on different uh.
Yeah, understood.
I think, you know, getting back to what you said, Jerry, is we should see what the final product is going to look like.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if staff gets it.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Fran and maybe I missed it. Was the fire department okay with, with the plan?
Uh, they didn't have any comments, so that means that they didn't have any concerns.
We have hydrants both sides of the building. On Central Street, in front of the plaza and in the back where is not uh the subject project.
Okay. I, I guess I would still, sometimes if we didn't hear from them, Fran, my concern is, is maybe someone just didn't get to it, you know, um, but I, I guess I would just make it subjective.
And if I, if I may, gentlemen, right on that building, there is also a fire hydrant.
Yeah, but I mean, sometimes they have more concerns than, than just um fire hydrant.
Right, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, access and everything.
Yeah, make sure, yeah, like Mr. Lockout said, access. I mean, obviously they can get to it in different ways, but still.
Yeah, you gotta be careful.
You know, as Jerry said, it's a health con- concern, so it's nice to have the input from the fire department.
Right.
And then if we reach out to them, um, if they haven't got a hold of it or they say we have no comments, at least we have that. If it comes back, then um, then obviously we give the applicant an opportunity to address it and the board would be, be heard on that as well.
Nice to hear some youthful voices.
Very youthful.
So then, any of the board members have any further follow-up? Uh, uh, is that, before we do that, Fran, do you have any further comments? I know you got a lot of the things from Hancock Associates just um, you know, this week. I don't know if you had an opportunity to review everything, uh, so I don't know if you have anything further that the board didn't pick up on. Any of the comments that we received from staff back in December, if we've adjusted those adequately?
Um, I do think that my comments are addressed. I agree that I think it makes sense to remove that parking spot to ensure that circulation is okay. Um, and I think it's smart. I didn't realize that one of the lanes would be a pass-through lane. So I think that that makes a lot of sense um to ensure that people can exit the site. But aside from that, I don't have any additional comments. You covered everything.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I think we got it.
Anything further from the board or?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, so we need a site plan and special permit, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I guess we, I'll, I'll make a motion for the special permit first and then the understanding we probably incorporate all the conditions for the site plan. The uh, make a motion to approve the special permit with the following conditions. Uh, approval is subject to um the um uh approval of an, a, an ATM and specifically noting not an interactive kiosk. Uh, the applicant will remove uh the parking space closest to the bypass lane at the corner of the building and reconfigure the adjacent parking uh uh spot uh to um, um, be at a, uh, at an angle uh similar to the, the additional spots at the rear of the building. The uh application is subject to approval, final stormwater uh approval from uh the city's water department, subject to final approval from the city's fire department, subject to a lighting plan approved by DPD, subject to uh final approval of the um design of the uh drive thru, um, and I don't even know what we want to call this, but uh what was presented as a concept here or the, as the uh, uh, the connection to the building, but that whole design of the, of the drive thru ATM subject to approval by DPD with final approval by uh the planning board. And I guess with that, Mr. Chairman, if the DPD was in a, was satisfied with it, they would just give a positive recommendation for us to review it, so we see it. And if they have an issue, then obviously we decide on, on.
I agree with that. I think, you know, even if DPD agrees on it, they can at least bring it to us. Um, and we can put in an old business so we can get a look at it. And then they can say, you know, we're comfortable with this, or we just want to see it to the board, to the board. And if they have any questions, we can reach out to the applicant and have them come into a further meeting to hopefully try to answer some of those questions.
Right.
Would that be satisfactory, Jerry? I mean, that way we have a chance to actually look at it. Um, I mean, DPD could approve it, but um as of right now, we have more board members than we have DPD staff, so we might have a couple of questions. No disrespect to staff, so, you know, uh, just so, I mean, um, so if we have a couple of questions, so we know what ourselves, what it's going to look like the final part.
And then I would just add, I, I, and I saw, and I have to say it's because the, the plans, and I should have actually blown them up on my computer, but the, the plans were, were small here. I would just put, I know you provided Brian the landscape plan, but I just would, I would make the landscape plan a subject to final approval by DPD as well, just for the types of plants and how that uh all comes together. And um, and I think that covers it because you incorporated the sidewalk extension on the plans, so that's, that's, that's for approving. Uh, so Mr. Chairman, that would be uh my conditions for the approval of the special permit.
May, may I add something to that?
That's up to Mr. Fichette.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Fichette, we like to have a little green space there so we can plow the snow.
Oh, sure.
I need a little storage.
We, if we take the entire space and put trees, as you may say, then we don't have any place to put the snow.
No, and I, and I would agree with you, sir, and that's, yeah, I would agree with you. And I, I like what was presented, but again, without really seeing the final approval, I know DPD will take that into account. That's part of the reason for the open space. So to, to your point, you are correct. Yes.
This is my concern.
Yeah.
As, as the manager and owner of this place, I like to have a space, in, in enough space so that I can unload the excess snow that we'll probably get in the year.
Oh, yeah, no, you're gain, you're gaining that which doesn't exist today. So absolutely.
That's right.
Yeah.
This, and I, I want to remove and do all of this, uh, go through all of this expense.
Sure. No, understood.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Fichette on the special permit um with several conditions. Fran, do you have those conditions? Any questions on any of those?
Um, I do have one question. So for the drive thru canopy design, um, would you like us to bring it before the board prior to issuing the building permit?
If, if we could see it, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you want to send us plans, let us see it, um, and we can do it administratively and we can um put it on the agenda and then just have us go over it.
Mm-hmm.
And then um, yeah, because I think um as Jerry emphasized earlier, you know, um, we want to see the final product be, be, before the building permit is issued.
Sure.
I think it's kind of hard to reverse it once the building permit's been already issued.
You're right.
And ba- and basically, um, you know, like Jerry said, a lot of cities and towns would say, hey, we want the final product now. The bank doesn't want to do it. It's too bad. Tell the bank to take a hike, you know?
Yeah.
Because, you know, it wrestles with us. I mean, you know, the bank, the bank doesn't make like our rules. We don't regulate the bank's rules.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
If, hey, on this issue?
No, 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 not yet, please. So I'm trying to answer the young ladies' questions, okay? So I'm saying, yeah, if we can see it before the, the permit is, is approved. Uh, I think we're being very lenient in making that a recommendation. Um, you know, I mean, because they're saying, well, we want to see this, but like I say, I don't work for the bank. I work for the city of Lowell.
May, may I interject?
Yes, sir.
The board sees. The board sees fit not to have any overhead, how do you see it?
We want to see what the final design is that the bank wants you to put up. That's what we want to see.
Right now, I do not have that.
I know that. I know that. I know that. So that's why we're putting it in as a condition approval, that we want to see that before we allow a building permit. So if it comes in and we like it, everything's fine, I'm sure the board members are gonna say, good, it looks good, it's what we thought it would look like. If it comes in and it doesn't look good at all, because the bank wants to do it a certain way, and this, and, and the board members say, well, we're not very happy with that design whatsoever, then we're gonna make the final determination. So the, the, it rests with the planning board, makes the final decision, not the bank. If the bank made the final decision, then we wouldn't need any planning board.
That's why we're here.
That's correct. So we just want to see what they, what they're gonna, what the, the, the architectural plans they want to put up. As Jerry mentioned, a lot of cities and towns would say, no, we want to see it first. We're being lenient enough to say, we want to see it thereafter, so therefore the bank will say, okay, we'll put the funding up, this is what we're gonna look like. And I think they put something up that the city's not happy with, the board's not happy with. You can come back in, you can give us comments, see what other designs we go for it. Or if he comes in and says, it looks great, we like it. You know, that's all we want to do. We want to see the product, I believe is, I know I do, I think some other board members, I don't know if I can all speak. But, like I said last time, we, we want to see what we're proving, that's all. I don't think that's more than reasonable. I think it's above, above, above reasonable.
I, I give, I gave you everything that I had in my possession.
I understand, I understand. I'm talking about the bank now, not you. If the bank doesn't want to give it to us, then the bank thing's not gonna be built. I mean, that's all we want. We want to see, yeah, we want to see what the.
Will be there.
Yeah, that's all we want to see. We want to see the rendering drawings that the bank's gonna approve before we give the final approval. That, I believe, that's in what, the motions, right, Jerry? Am I misleading on this?
That's correct, Mister Chairman, yes.
I think, I think some of the other board members, I know Mister Lockhart alluded to that as well, I know I've alluded to it last time and this time. And I think, uh, Brian was fine with it earlier, saying if we can get some additional approval to go forward to bank, come back and show you the plans. Um, we're willing to work with it, there's no doubt about it, but I think we should have the final say of the matter. We're not just gonna say, okay, pass it along, let them do what they want, and we're not gonna see it, and we're not gonna know what happens till we drive by someday in the future.
Right.
So, just show us the plans when you get them, and then if we're not satisfied, we'll have another meeting. If we're satisfied, then we'll, we'll communicate through staff, and staff will let you know. It's a go.
But the okay to be built is there.
We're giving you the okay with the condition. The condition is, we want to see those architectural plans. So, we're giving you approval with the condition. Matter of fact, we gave you one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. About almost ten, ten conditions, so that's one of the conditions. Yeah, I mean, hey, so if, so you, you gotta satisfy all eight conditions for, to get the spec, to get the building permit. Brian, Brian, do you understand what I'm coming with? Do you have any questions, Brian?
N- no, no, and, and.
It's basically what you alluded to to begin with, correct? Mine, right? I mean, like, we're gonna try to get weekend, show it to the board and see if the board is satisfied with it, right?
I, I think this works out very beautifully, where we now have an approval that we can put in front of Bank of America to allow them to negotiate and execute a lease and then move forward on their.
Okay, so let me get back there. So basically, we haven't got the approval yet, but still in the middle of the motion, so.
We haven't taken a vote on anything.
Yeah, well, also we got is a motion on the floor yet, so, okay, so we have the motion for the special permit with the conditions that was appointed by, excuse me, the conditions that was made up by Mister Fichette. So do we have a second on the special permit with the condition? So Mister Lockhart, okay, Mister Lockhart made that for a second, okay? And so now we need to vote for the site plan. I think Mister Fichette was gonna make the same vote with the same conditions. Am I correct with that, Jerry?
That's correct, Mister Chairman.
Okay, and Bob will let you go on this one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, so on the site plan, we have the same motion made for approval with the same conditions as outlined on the special permit that was made by Mister Fichette. And we do have a second on that, so let me just back up a little bit. On the first motion, we had that motion, and the second, so let me take a vote on that first, I'm sorry. So, on the special permit, we have a motion and a second, all, 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 all in favor, say aye.
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 Cheer, vote, cheers. Any opposition? Hearing none, the special permit is approved. Now, going further, for the site plan, we had the motion on the floor by Mister Fichette to approval with the same conditions. We had a second by Mister Malovich to allow the special permit with the same conditions. We have a motion and a second at this point in time, um. What's the, what's the vote for record of board members? Everybody, um, everyone, everybody, all in favor of the motion in the second on the special permit, say aye.
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 Cheer, vote, cheers. Any opposition? Hearing none, so the site plan and the special permit are both approved. Um, without any opposition with those conditions, so hopefully we'll get those conditions intact. We have any problems at all, uh, staff will bring it back to us, and then basically, when you get the renderings from the bank, staff will get them and show them to us, and if we're totally satisfied, uh, we'll let, uh, Fran notify the applicant that we're fine. If we have condition, having problems with those conditions, we'll ask it, we'll ask for an agreeable date, have the applicant come back and go through the architectural plans, or any other of the plans that were outstanding that have not been satisfied by staff. Is that acceptable to all board members?
Yes.
Okay. That's acceptable to you, Jerry?
Yes, Mister Chairman, that's exactly what the intent was.
Yeah, but, because obviously all the other conditions fall in place as well, so if there's an issue on any one of them, we bring them back as we have in the past on any, on any other projects that we've done.
Correct.
Alright, so you have an approval, hopefully we'll see the architectural plans and everything else will fall in place, and, uh, we wish you well.
Mister Chair, members of board, thank you very much.
Good luck, Brian. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving along, um, anybody have any new bit, uh, we don't have any new business, anybody have notices, um, uh, any comments from any of the, for the, for the board members or staff?
I guess on the historic board, we did not meet in January, there were no public hearing schedules. Our next meeting is February eighth.
Are you still looking into those, uh, designs on the buildings, um?
Yeah, we'll go over that. That's an interesting, uh.
Yeah, I see when it's, one, uh, one of the places I used to work at in the city of Lynn, they, they started doing it, like, down by the train stations on the side of some of the walls. And some of them come out good. Right, walking lunchtime, it's amazing looking some of the art.
Well, it's an interesting thing that.
Yeah, the murals.
I think I stated before, it adds some real interest around the city, especially, this is for the downtown Lowell historic district, you know.
Yeah, the historic, they, they control what colors you use, everything else, it's a lot more strict than historic district anywhere else.
Yeah, although we're trying to encourage that all over the city, not just downtown.
Okay.
It's, uh, you know, it's, it's interesting, and it'll come at some point.
Any other board members have any comments? I know, as, as we opened the meeting, or prior to it, we're talking to Fran, how she indicated that we have a new member, Jess Wilson, so we're gonna welcome her and wish her well. And if she ever had any questions or comments, you can always feel free to call myself, if not, I'm sure any of the board members are flexible as well. And also, I think Fran said we might have a new, um, member come, I mean, a new, uh, social planning coming on in the near future, so hopefully that works out. Um, for the planning department. Any other board members have any comments? If not, we can make a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Maybe by Mister Malovich, motion to adjourn, and was second by, was it Caleb? I, I didn't catch it.
Hey, give it to Caleb.
Jerry, okay. Then motion by Jerry, so motion's made and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Cheer, vote, cheers. Any opposition? Hearing none, we have adjourned. Good luck. Thank you, everybody.